Okay. All right, in the interest of time, I like to get started on time. Thank you all for joining us this evening. This is the August 5th, 2020 hearing for the Health Committee. I am Councilman Christopher Burnett, Chairman of the Committee. Before we start, I am asking everyone to mute yourself when you're not speaking. Identify yourself before you speak so that everyone who is watching knows who you are and for our records. Be sure to speak slowly and clearly, and after you're finished speaking, please mute yourself again until you are asked to speak again. And that's mainly just so that we, this comes through as clear as possible since everything going on, we were doing this online. So we need to make sure everyone can be heard clearly. We are also joined today by Councilmember Ed Risinger of the 10th District, Councilmember Slyfer of the 5th District, and our staff is Margery Curran, Staff of the Committee. I do see someone from the Office of Council Services, but I can't see who is there. And it looks like we also have a few representatives, agency representatives that we will hear from very soon. Thank you all for joining us. I don't see the Council President here, so usually we would open with them or someone from their office. But it does look like we do have at least one representative from the Council President's office on the line with us. And we are here today to discuss Council Resolution 20-0231R, Informational Hearing, Bringing Back Victory Gardens. And the purpose of this is to invite the Health Commissioner, Director of Wreckin Parks, Director of Sustainability and Community Leaders to discuss the efficacy of increasing community gardens within our neighborhoods in order to offset COVID-19 and its ancillary impact and effects, as well as generally making our city a greener, healthier and cleaner place to live. The way that we will conduct the hearing is we will start with agency reports from the agencies that have joined us this evening. We will then shift to questions from the council. And then we've also been joined by a number of amazing community leaders, farmers, activists, advocates that we're going to hear from, and then we will go to general public testimony. With that, let's start with the agency reports. So let's start with the Office of Sustainability.
For Councilmember Burnett, this is Lisa McNeely, Director of Office of Sustainability. Abby Cox, an environmental planner in our office, has got a 10-minute presentation that we can share in addition to what we've had in our bill report. Is this the right time for that?
So let's, let's do this. Does the, I see we have the Health Department in Wreckin Parks. Do they have, do you have presentations or could we, or long? If you're going to take minutes, I'd rather leave with, or finish with yours and then go right into the panel. But that, it's okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. This is DePaul on behalf of DePaul Neighborhood and Baltimore City Health Department. You do not have a presentation. I just wanted to note that we are wholeheartedly in favor of this resolution. We believe that this is a much-needed conversation. Food insecurity is a, is a real problem in the city, and we need to do whatever we can to address it. Given that we are currently facing COVID-19 right now, all of these issues are that much more important and much more pressing. So thank you for bringing this conversation forward, and we are in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Wreckin Parks, I guess you can get me on the line.
Hi, this is Jenny Morgan from Baltimore City Wreckin Parks. We do not have a presentation. We do have an unusual situation, I think, where the person that would testify for Recreation Parks and the Planning Department are one and the same, Harold McCray, who's our City Farms Person Emeritus. So we are deferring to sustainability for the presentation.
Sound good. All right. The floor is yours, Lisa McNeely.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Ms. McNeely, do I need to make you a presenter so you can show your, share your PowerPoint with us?
No, if you can make Abby Cox the presenter, she'll be walking through the presentation.
Will do.
Ready when you are. Okay, I see that I'm now the presenter, sharing my screen. And I do have a presentation. So I was planning to speak for not more than 10 minutes. If there's another timeframe I should speak to, please let me know.
Oh, take as much time as you need. There are always the very important issue.
Well, thank you so much, Chair Burnett, and the other members of the City Council who are here tonight, as well as the other speakers and members of the public and everyone who made this meeting possible. The Office of Sustainability is part of the City's Department of Planning, and we are strongly in support of this resolution. So my name is Abby Cox. As Director McNeely said, I'm an environmental planner at the office. And for the last nine years, part of my work has been supporting urban agriculture in Baltimore. So pictured there, just to give them the kudos that they deserve, is a recent harvest from the Plantation Park Heights Urban Garden, which has been growing food for years and donating it and selling it. But especially during COVID-19, donating food to neighbors in cooperation with the Langston Hughes Community Center in Park Heights, as a number of other farms, gardens and individuals are doing. So what is the state of urban agriculture in Baltimore? First of all, to explain how we use the term, we mean everything from backyard gardens to schoolyard gardens, community gardens, faith-based institutional gardens and small farm businesses in Baltimore City. So all the growing of food. And in a nutshell, I would say that it's both thriving and in need of great support. So we track the food production sites in the city as best we can, and we estimate there are approximately 36, what you could call urban farm sites in Baltimore, although many of them might not look like a traditional farm to most people and sort of blur the line with the community garden. But those are sites where people are producing food, you know, for the purpose of sailor donation, not just, you know, to feed the people who are doing the growing in that immediate sort of community. And then at least an additional 100, again, community gardens, school gardens, institutional gardens. We haven't tracked backyard gardens, but this is more of the full picture. And as you can see, you know, it's throughout the city. And to give you some ideas of what that looks like, this is the Victorine Q Adams Community Garden on the west side, been around for many years. It's very beautiful and picturesque. So this is your sort of classic community garden where it's divided up into plots. You know, and so you can give a plot to each individual, you can have communal plots. But that's sort of like what we think of, that look when we think of community gardens. The Duncan Street Miracle Garden in East Baltimore, just off of North Avenue, really amazing, highly productive site that's taken over a huge plot of land for many years, growing fruit trees and watermelons in addition to the vegetables pictured here. White Lock Community Farm in Reservoir Hill is one of those sites where it's very community-based, and yet they, they are farming for sale. In the back shed there, they have a cooling unit where they put CSA shares, which are weekly produce shares that people buy into at the beginning of the season at a discounted rate and pick up each week. So in addition to selling at markets and special events and to restaurants or other vendors, these sites are really serving their neighborhoods. This is the Real Food Farm Mobile Market, based in Clifton Park and in the neighborhood of South Clifton Park. Real Food Farm is a project of Civic Works. That's one of the oldest urban farms in the city. And they've got a converted sort of ice cream truck situation there that they take around to have a mobile farmer's market. This is in park, but also at senior centers at the Y, really invaluable service. And finally, here we have the Greener Garden. That's Mr. Warren Blue. He and his wife on the property that they own purchased the large lot next door, and they've been farming intensively on this small plot of land really successfully for a number of years and bringing in young people to educate them, bringing food to the community and just being an institution. So urban agriculture has always been a part of the work of the Office of Sustainability. And the first Baltimore Sustainability Plan that came out in 2009, you know, was embedded in there. We had a clear goal to increase the percentage of land under cultivation for urban agriculture and also to create an urban agriculture plan for the city, which we did over 2012 and 2013. And in 2013, it was adopted by the City Planning Commission. So you can find that on our website at the link there. But it goes through the context of agriculture in Baltimore and talks about victory gardens and about that history of us coming together as a city and the nation coming together to say, we need to produce more of our own food to be healthy, resilient, sustainable in the face of adversity. There's a land assessment in there where we looked at what land the city owned that was flat, open to the sun, you know, potentially usable for these purposes of a certain size. What are all the relevant policies and resources? And then sort of the meat of the plan is 25 main recommendations on things like supporting composting in the city. Things very much like what are called for in your resolution, Councilmember Burnett. But we address access to water, access to soil, access to capital for these small business operations and for the gardens as well and other forms of support. And then last year, we released the 2019 Baltimore Sustainability Plan. And that was an 18-month effort engaging over 1,000 people across the city and doing deep dives with stakeholders on different issues. And the Baltimore Food Policy Initiative, which is also housed in the Office of Sustainability, really took point on this one in a big way and worked with our gardeners and farmers to see urban agriculture as, you know, the, not just, oh, we want to increase it, but like what would we really need to do to dig into that with people? And so our three critical strategies in the 2019 Sustainability Plan are to create agriculture land use policies that encourage urban farms and local food production, ensure farmers and gardeners can produce food, flowers, fiber and fuel in ways that are safe, environmentally, mentally sustainable and socially responsible, and educate residents on opportunities to support and engage with them. Feel this strategy in particulars is especially relevant to the text of the resolution and support growers to create financially viable urban agriculture. So we are in a time of crisis. There's no doubt about that. And food insecurity in Baltimore is at an all-time high, it's fair to say. You know, I can't necessarily speak to like the Depression era and whatnot, but within our memory. The Baltimore Food Policy Initiative has estimated that up to a third of Baltimore's population could face food insecurity or hunger, you know, to put it plainly, before COVID-19 runs its course. And so for a number of us in the Office of Sustainability, our work has shifted in the past several months to support community-based food distribution with, in some cases, these garden and farm partners, but in many cases, other sorts of partners, all scattered throughout the city, churches, food pantries, soup kitchens, nonprofits at every level, because the need is so great. So I say that just to say that, you know, the resolution is correct in our eyes, that we are in a crisis, that it has been successful in the past for us to focus on local food production in a crisis, that we have the infrastructure in place to do it, and that more needs to happen because there is a great deal of struggle in the urban agriculture community. You're going to hear tonight from a representative from the University of Maryland Extension, from the Farm Alliance of Baltimore, from the City Farms Program. If Mr. McCray is on, I didn't see him on the list earlier, but hopefully he's joined us. And from the New Broadway East Community Association, who will tell you about what they're doing on the ground in relation to urban agriculture. In terms of our emergency response as a city, we wrote urban agriculture into the city's emergency food response. So focusing on distribution now, but also on long-term resilience and sustainability and not forgetting that there is no food distribution without food production. And we directed nonprofit partners to work with the Farm Alliance of Baltimore, which was able to meet a lot of critical infrastructure needs in terms of electricity lines for greenhouses, in terms of, you know, plastic covering for hoop houses, water line connections and safety materials, in terms of food washing stands, you know, which is heavily on everybody's mind in terms of COVID. And also, they were able to open a direct support fund for their members. They have a dozen or so farm members who are more focused on production. And as a network, you know, I know they've been wanting to work with the council for some time and weren't able to come tonight. It was their quarterly board meeting, but are very interested in continuing this conversation in the future. So I just wanted to lift that up as well. But yeah, I've spoken long enough, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you. Also want to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilmember. Thank you for joining us. So what I, what I think, so I have a number of questions, but I do want, I'll let the committee ask any that they may have on your particular presentation. I'm going to hold mine until we've had the full panel because there's sort of broader questions that I think all would be welcome to chime into. So I'll defer other, the customers on here, any questions for sustainability on this? Okay, so I'm not hearing any. So what I want to do, I'm going to shift to the panel, and then I'll, my questions are broad, so feel free to jump in at any point. Before we announce the panel, I do, don't want to miss an opportunity to shout out our young people in this work. I received six letters, I'm sorry, maybe a little bit more, a number of letters today from some amazing students at Green Street Academy in support of this. And so I did want to take an opportunity to thank, let's see, we got Donovan, Deshard, Carl, Eric, Christian, Christian, Destiny and Cam. Thank you for sending in, and one of these is really good. They're all really good. Sorry, I don't want to get in trouble. But I'm trying to pull up one that I thought did a pretty good job at summarizing why this is important. I'm trying to see, give me one second. No, I'm sorry, I had it up. All right. So this one comes, says, Dear Councilmembers, writing in support of Council Resolution 20-0231R, Bringing Back Victory Gardens. My name is Christian. I'm going to leave off the last name, and I attend Green Street Academy. For school, I'm currently working in construction design management, known as CDM. In other words, the work involved in managing a design team, ensuring design information is right and quality, and trying to eliminate health and safety risks in design during construction. This summer, I had, I am creating and maintaining my own home garden and accepting regular produce deliveries to distribute to my community. I'm also working on creating my own victory garden for my house. During World War II, victory gardens were planted by families in the U.S. to help prevent a food shortage. People were encouraged to produce their own food, planting vegetable gardens in their backyards, churchyards, city parks and playgrounds. In order to prevent germs from spreading or trouble with transportation, it is easier to provide your own fruits and vegetables. Growing your own food makes you feel powerful and knowing that your food, the food you grew is safe and full of nutrition is priceless. Another reason to grow your own food is for preparedness. We can't live without food, and food is a necessary resource. In time of need, be it in emergency or getting laid off from work, it is important, isn't, it is important to know that your family can still eat. And Destiny. And thank you all for submitting, again, really good letters. They are going to be included in the bill file for this resolution for eternity. So thank you all for weighing in. They were supposed to apparently do videos, but I think a few of them got shy, so they wrote letters instead. But thank you. So what we're going to do is I'm going to shift over to our panel. All right. So first up, we have Amelia Harri, Harris, Amelia Harris. Are you here?
No, Mr. Chair, she's not in attendance yet.
Okay, we may be joining, we'll go back. Doris Minor Terrell.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Doris Minor Terrell from the Broadway East Community. Thanks for having me. It means a lot to be a part of your panel. So I'm speaking from a community that is actually a food desert. So for us, it means a lot. This resolution means a lot in terms of giving the people an equal opportunity to have access to food. Not only that, it's kind of a legacy community. So we have a lot of senior citizens who would like to take on the task of having a garden in their yard spacing. For us, I think that one of the things that we would focus on, at least five, five points that means a lot to us. Streamlining the process, easy access to capital, supporting of the supplies and maintenance needed for the program, a continuous information exchange and a point person for contact to resolve issues that people frequently have when they're farming. So we're just asking to have that expert available. The Duncan Street Miracle Garden is currently in our footprint, which we cherish and we love Mr. Sharp. So we know what can be done. It's our desire to reproduce that in a manner that would service more of our residents. This resolution means that people, if moving forward, people would have that opportunity to feed themselves. You know, your own tomato, your own cucumber, maybe some strawberries. But this means that the food exchange would elevate for them. Did I give my major kudos to the Office of Sustainability? Because I love them. They do a lot for us. It means that they push projects forward that we have on the table, and they're always available to answer questions.
Thank you, and I second that. I love the Office of Sustainability. Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Terrell, for your feedback. And I'll, I'm going to hold questions until all of the panelists have gone. Okay, we have Eric Jackson in on the call.
Peace, y'all. I am Brother Lee from Black Yound Institute. Unfortunately, Brother Eric had a very important family issue. He had to get you right away, so I was extending the gap for him.
Perfect. Hey, introduce yourself and tell us what you do. Thank you for coming in.
Absolutely. So again, my name is Brother Lee. I am Director of Operations and Culture here at Black Yound Institute. I was asked to share a little bit about our organization and what we're doing with the Cherry Hill Urban Community Garden. So Black Yound Institute is a Pan-African organization that's working to build self-sustainable and self-reliant communities in poor black and brown communities, and we do that through black land and full sovereignty. And that's our way of combating food apartheid. And it's five, it's a five, I guess, a five-fast of work. We do council for black land and full sovereignty, which is organizing resources and power for us. We do black food research, which is making our own contributions to food research, including recipes. We've all had those recipes that get handed down from our grandparents. But it's including archiving and making sure we capture those things as well. Those are important and essential into handing down tradition. Full Sisu, which is food economics, working on building a grocery store right here in Cherry Hill to combat food apartheid, which is also an extension of what we're working on at the garden. We have a political education initiative, which is St. Cara Hamer Academy, which is named after Thomas St. Cara and Fanny Lou Hamer, who are both ancestors and leaders in the past work that we've done. And lastly, and this is our urban agriculture initiative, and this is the one I was asked to expound on a little bit more. So right now, Cherry Hill Urban Community Garden is a one and a quarter acre garden that's right in the middle of the community of Cherry Hill. We were asked to take on that gardening in 2018. And, and I know you all can't see my height. However, when we got to the garden, it had trees about my height, and I'm about six foot five. So that'll allow you, you know, imagine what one acre of trees could possibly look like, or weeds that are trees that grown that tall. But we were, we were tasked to get down on our knees and actually work with the community, pull everything out of the garden, be able to get it back up and running. The garden was once stewed by Mama Juanita, which is about, she stewed it for over a decade. After that, it lay dormant, and working with the Cherry Hill Development Corporation, we were trusted to take on the garden. Since then, 2018 was our first growing season. We started kind of with the blindfold, no data. Since then, we were able to, our first year was able to distribute over 6,000 pounds of food into the community. And fast forward to this year, which we may, may be on pace to do double. We've also been effective in COVID with being able to distribute our, distribute our food to families inside of the community as a part of a distribution, food distribution hub that's right at, used to be the old Cherry Hill Middle School. And we're working with Elevate, Rich Organization, a couple other organizations that I hear that we all work together to actually distribute food. And I think we distributed something over about 60,000 pounds. Now, right in the Cherry Hill Urban Community Garden, we do a few things. We do, we have a community garden collective. I heard a lot of folks talk about how important it is to have folks growing inside of their backyards and have them actually practice the art of agriculture. So we have a community garden, which is made up of 27 beds, where right now, 50% of those beds are occupied by folks in the community who are able to action. I wish I could show you all pictures in the garden, but they actually, they have several things growing, sunflowers, fruits, vegetables, I mean, even things that aren't even native to the land that we have. So that's pretty cool. We, we have several things grown in the garden, but we're able to, with the production of our food, we're able to distribute it, one to, we do a monthly pop-up market, twice a month now. And that's actually, takes place right in the middle of the community at Cherry Hill Urban Community, I'm sorry, Cherry Hill Shopping Center. And that's twice a month, allowing folks to come out and have access to the healthy food and to engage with us and actually, just actually build and build a relationship. And lastly, I want to add, we also do a political education initiative in the garden, where we're talking about folks who, we're talking about agriculture in the past, folks who've been connected to agriculture and folks who've been connected to the land and really stressing the land as a resource. And lastly, and just really, we've done some listening sessions and produced some reports that have, that have been word from the community about what we want to grow and how we want to grow it and what we want to do with the garden. So everything I mentioned now has came directly from voices of the community and just us as the executors on our part. And the last piece I add is, right now, we're also working on a, what is called a pop delivery service. Folks, if you have had Amazon Prime before, Amazon Prime groceries, they were a big hit during the, during the quarantine and the pandemic, they dropped the groceries at your door. We're working on the, we're working on the service, similar to that as well. However, we're working the youth in the community who actually beat the deliveries. And we're talking like, I'm pretty young, but we're talking like old school with the carts on the back and you're talking about the bikes and everything. So we're actually trying to get back to really building the relationships in the community, using the land as a resource and having folks stay connected to the garden by growing, by engaging and really just by, just by sharing tradition, sharing culture. So, and if I didn't answer anything that I was supposed to answer, please enlighten me. Like I said, it was a sporadic change for Eric, so I want to make sure I cover all that folks asked for as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Picture you filling in on the spot, man. You covered a lot of ground there. So we're going, again, we're holding questions until the end. I have Harold McCray. Can see him on there. I can unmute it? There's a little mute button at the bottom left corner of the, there you go, you're off me. We didn't, should be able to hear you now.
So is that working? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
My name is Harold McCray, and I started a garden here in the city of Baltimore back in 2013. And during that process, it led me to become more involved in the City Farms Program. So I became the City Farms Coordinator for the city of Baltimore. And the City Farms Program was started back in 1970, I think it's 79, and it started, or 78, with the advent of, of the then Governor Schaefer wanting to establish some sort of quote-unquote victory gardens for people in the city of Baltimore. So the program now has about 11 city farms. They're scattered throughout the city, and they are primarily in city farms, city farms and within a park. When it's not in a park, it's usually a vacant housing lot that has been converted into a city farms. Uh, when it's not in a park, it's usually a vacant, um, housing lot that has been converted into a city farms. Uh, most of the people who have participated, uh, they range in ages from twenty-one years old to ninety-nine years old. And the, what the City Farms Program provides is that we give them instructions on how to cultivate gardens, how to enrich their soil. We also, uh, uh, give them, uh, plants that they can plant. We actually grow them in the Silver and Arboretum, uh, greenhouse so that they can be sold to the individual gardeners so that they can have a starter, a leg up on the growing season for a lot of the plants. The, uh, a lot of the City Farms participants are involved in a lot of different community projects. I sh- I want to, um, zero in on one specifically, and that is, um, the Rock Rose Community City Farms Program, which has a charitable, uh, 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 wing to the, uh, the program. And they provide, uh, food for a charitable, uh, organization, uh, each year. And, uh, two years ago, they, they had fifteen hundred pounds of sweet potatoes that were donated to the, uh, church that actually distributes the potatoes to the neighborhood. Uh, and that's in Rock Rose area and also where the church is located. There are other programs like that within the City Farms Program that, uh, distributes a lot of food to the community. Essentially, if you grow it, you're going to share it. And so that's the beauty of the City Farms Program. It, it, it truly builds communities. I have, I have witnessed how so many people have come through the program uh, and have brought their friends, they have brought their families and they have engaged people in talking. And I don't think that that level of communication exists outside of something like this City Farms Program where you're bringing in people from diverse backgrounds, coming together with a singular thought of growing vegetables, flowers and things that they can, uh, preserve in some cases. So, um, essentially, the, the, the farm program for the city of Baltimore, which is with the Baltimore City Recreation Parks, is, uh, truly sponsored by the city of, of Baltimore. It is the best, I keep saying it's the best kept secret in the city of Baltimore. Few people know about it. Unfortunately, uh, we try to get it out by word of mouth, but it oftentimes misses the point. When we do have seminars, we oftentimes will expand it to all of the community gardens and victory gardens and, uh, places like Cherry Hill, we reach out to Cherry Hill, we reach out to other places that have, um, victory gardens uh, to attend workshops that we have at the Silver and Arboretum. So that's something that we, we do ongoing. And we also have programs that we try to cultivate, uh, students, uh, to work in the gardens. We also have a, uh, program that, uh, we started at the this Clifton City Farms and it's for, it's a therapeutic recreation, uh, gardening for uh, young people who have physical handicaps or disabilities. Uh, we work with them along with the Master Gardeners of Maryland, who, um, University of Maryland Extension Master Gardens Program and trying to cultivate, uh, some learning tools for, uh, people who are, uh, in these programs. So that program has been very successful. We've got funding from various outside sources to provide, uh, additional raised beds and things that would make gardening a lot more pleasurable for these students and young people. So, uh, it, I, I came to the city, uh, of, uh, knowing full well that one of the enriching things about gardening is that not only feeds you, uh, it feeds, uh, you know, a lot of your friends. Uh, it begins to, you begin to understand the importance of the environment. Uh, and when I became involved with the Office of Sustainability, I really began to understand how important city farms, city gardens are to any city. And when I had an opportunity to go to St. Paul, Minneapolis and witness what was going on across the country, I thought that what we were doing was unusual, but what we were doing is catch-up because everybody else across the country is doing these victor, victory gardens, city farms, and it's an important aspect of urban life. So, um, and I also sent a brochure, um, that I sent to Abby so that that could be shared so that we can get more people involved in this program and whatever support that you can get with, uh, improving and strengthening, um, this wonderful uh, program here in the city of Baltimore. I would appreciate it and all the gardeners that I know who are gardening at City Farms would also underscore that as well. So if I don't know if I've answered all your questions, if there are more, then I'd be happy to respond.
Thank you. Um, so yeah, I'm going to throw some broad questions out, um, after we get all the, through, through all of the, three more presenters.
Sure.
But thank you. Thank you for all you do, um, for your testimony today. Um, next I have, uh, Catherine Latar, Latar. Sorry if I'm saying your last name incorrectly.
Hi, um, it's, it's Lutter. So, all right. Uh, my name is Catherine Lutter. I am the Executive Director of Baltimore Green Space, which is a land trust for community-managed open spaces. And for the past eight years, I've been working to support community green spaces in Baltimore, but the organization has been around for twelve. As part of that work, not only do we protect community gardens that are five years old or more, but we also keep a running database of the green spaces that are cared for by neighbors on land that could not be bought and sold. In the face of the many challenges that Baltimore offers, these amazing leaders successfully restore and maintain green spaces with little support. Um, in twenty nineteen, there were two hundred and forty-eight of these green spaces in our records, growing food, pocket parks, farms. And the benefits of these spaces are endless. Nearly one hundred of them are growing food in some form. So Abby talked about the farms, but a lot of the smaller gardens grow some food, depending on which neighbors want to grow food for themselves. In addition, uh, to serving as a source of fresh produce, these spaces provide nearby access to nature that would not be available if they didn't exist otherwise. As you all know, historic redlining practices have created a disproportionate number of vacancies in black and brown communities. Of the two hundred and forty-eight spaces analyzed in twenty nineteen, seventy-three percent are located in predominantly African-American communities ranging from sixty to ninety-seven percent. If these spaces were better funded and supported, it could provide yet another step to addressing equity concern. Additionally, the data from twenty nineteen showed that at least seventy-six percent of these spaces are in neighborhoods where the median household income is below forty-one thousand and as low as fifteen thousand. By providing more support to communities where neighbors are already bearing the health impacts as well as social and emotional costs of the long-term systemic lack of, lack of investment, we can work towards restorative investment in our most vulnerable community. During the COVID nineteen pandemic, we've seen a rise in the use of all the green spaces we are connected to, revealing their importance in the overall health and well-being of neighborhoods. These, there, the longer the pandemic goes on, the more crucial these spaces become than ever. And they could be used as anchor spaces to grow, uh, you know, information, to share knowledge, to network more. Um, our twenty twenty data shows a total of two hundred and eighty-five green spaces that neighbors care for that create anchors of safety, health and beauty in their neighborhood. They need more support and expanding the number of green spaces, growing, growing food and flowers can only increase the health and wellness of our communities during these unprecedented times. I also want to say it's just an honor to speak along with this amazing panel and, um, to speak before this council. I urge you to support this resolution.
Thank you. Um, all right, next we have, I have, uh, Marcus Williams. Uh, we can't hear you. There's a, you gotta hit the.
Sorry. I thought I, oh, did I hit it? Okay. Good evening, Council, uh, members. Good evening, sir. How are you? Uh, my name is Marcus Williams. I work for the University of Maryland Extension here in Baltimore City. Um, just want to talk a little bit about Extension has been around in this country since over a hundred years. And it's powered by, in the state of Maryland, our two land-grant institutions, which are the University of Maryland College Park and the University of Maryland Eastern Shore. Um, it's also, we get our information from other colleges around the country. Uh, for example, Rutgers and, uh, all the way to Florida A&amp;M. Um, we strongly support this, uh, resolution because community gardens are necessary in our city of, uh, Baltimore. Uh, we've noticed that community gardens and surrounding community members consume more fruit and vegetables at a rate of five point seven times more than non-gardeners and home gardeners. We noticed that, uh, community gardens, uh, have a potential to decrease the barriers of, uh, food insecure areas. We know that community gardens reduce food miles that, uh, required to transport nutritious food to, uh, community members. They improve food security and they also, um, they have a positive correlation, um, in access to food in those areas. Uh, I support the, uh, master gardeners in the city of Baltimore and as a whole as our collective, which is a part of, uh, four H, uh, Family and Consumer Sciences, which you know as Homeec. Uh, we also do canning and other, uh, food preservation. Um, and we teach nutrition classes together. As a whole, we've, uh, reached about forty thousand, uh, members of the city of Baltimore and we've given back over twenty-five volunteer, uh, hours. That's also including technical hours to community members. So we see the importance of, uh, community guards, not only for, um, access to food, but also it facilitates, um, conversations when you get together with, uh, people in your community, you're able to, uh, facilitate ideas that will push, uh, community, community members forward to achieve other, uh, ideas and thoughts that, um, were, um, thought about. And I just want to share that tidbit. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Sorry, I had a tough time to meet by myself. Um, all right, our last speaker. And again, I want to apologize. I've, I've been trying to figure out your last name. Uh, we have, uh, Topay Pajing Bize. Is that my close? I hope I'm close.
Very close. Great. Um, good evening. My name is Topay Pajing Bisi and, um, during the day, I work as an agribusiness lecturer and advisor at the University of Maryland College Park. And at other times, I am the managing partner of Jodo Farms, a certified naturally grown produce farm in Montgomery County, Maryland. My, uh, agriculture is very important to me and I'm very honored and very happy to be speaking here in Baltimore today because Baltimore, I consider to be my hometown in, uh, Maryland. My first address was in Baltimore City, worked in Baltimore City for a couple of years, so I'm very passionate about that city. But our farm is in, um, Montgomery County and we live in Howard County. Jodo Farms is about two acres, two parcels of land on New Hampshire Avenue and a total of two acres. We're very passionate about food. And now that the pandemic has, you know, just disrupted everything, it has shown the importance and how vulnerable our communities are when it comes to food security. So we're very honored to be one of those people working to ensure that the food that we provide to our community is wholesome and is good. We serve our community through two primary means. We, uh, we spend at farmer's market, the biggest one is the Dupont Circle Farmer's Market in Washington DC, which I don't know if many of you know, didn't have a lot of diversity for a while. Uh, there, there are about sixty-plus vendors in that market and there was only one black farmer of the sixty-plus vendors. So in the summer of this year, we and about four other, um, black-owned businesses were admitted to that market. It's been a very good market. It's very busy for about five hours. This is something that I'd like cities like Baltimore to have. A big, huge market where the entire community can come together safely on a weekend to shop for a variety of food products. We also serve our community through community-supported agriculture, CSA. And as a matter of fact, two of our CSA customers live in Baltimore City. So this is, you know, something that we really like. We have about thirty CSA members this year and that's a huge jump from two last year. We, CSA was a minor part of our affairs last year, but because of COVID nineteen, people are more particular about what they eat and where the food comes from. One of the things that I have noticed this season is that people are dying, people are falling sick from COVID nineteen. But the awareness that we're getting in terms of food and the sources of our food and what sort of chemicals are or are not included in the food we eat has become even greater now. Because people are saying that the poorer your diet, the worse you are, what, the worse, the higher your risk when it comes to COVID nineteen. So we're very, um, we don't use any chemicals. We don't use any fertilizers. We don't use any pesticides. Everything we produce is produced as natural as it was meant to be. So this brings me to the problems, the challenges that we have apart from the almighty land. Land is a big challenge. And when in a place like Montgomery County, where there's ninety-three thousand acres, um, reserved for agriculture, we still have a challenge with land. Land is expensive, very expensive. And even when we want to expand, we can't afford the land. How many farmers can afford land at hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars an acre? How many years will it take you to recoup that money back? So I'm hoping that cities like Baltimore and other places can get a situation where they can match farmers with organizations with, and people who would like to share their spaces. It's really a shame to look at so many cities in this country and the, the, the green spaces, the open spaces are used for lawn. Lawn for what? This is where we can produce food. We need to turn the spaces to their original use, to what they used to be for before. So the, the biggest challenge really is, uh, land. The second challenge is labor. The, the, um, for people like us who produce hard, like really hard labor, hard work. Because if you're not using weed killers to kill the entire two acres and you're using your hand and you're using, you know, really manual labor, it is very hard for you to find somebody who will take that job instead of something that is easier. So I'm hoping that we can find cities like Baltimore, engage the young people in agriculture to create some sort of programs where people, even if they don't start their own farm businesses, can partner, can work with farmers like us and all the beautiful guardians that I've heard about on this call today to find a way to give them some sort of breaks where this young people can be engaged in the production of food is very rewarding. The last, but not the least, challenge is capital. Agriculture is the most expensive, underfunded business that I know of. We started this season with a van that was broken down and we had to go buy another van that cost us twenty thousand dollars. Our entire savings at the beginning of the, the season was wiped out, but we need van to transport our foods. Then we had to buy a cooling unit. That cost us a couple of thousands as well. This is very expensive. I'd like to see, you know, more support for people who are trying to farm. Even if you take a couple of people in a particular neighborhood and they have to share the same cooling unit or they have to share the same van, we have to begin to encourage people who are taking agriculture seriously. We have to begin to encourage people who are taking agriculture seriously. Um, you know, and I was asked to talk about farming while black. Honestly, um, I have to say that farming while black is as difficult as being black, period. Access to capital, access to labor, access to land is very, is very tough. You have my ancestors, I'm originally from Nigeria, and you know, you have my ancestors brought here to do this work, agriculture. And then when we were told that slavery was over, these ancestors were not given any land to start with. So you don't have black farmers having land passed down to them. How can we make this better? We need to use city property, city land and put it in trust in the hands of women farmers, black farmers, indigenous farmers, so that we can ensure diversity in our food system and equity. Thank you very much for um the audience. I look forward to taking any questions.
Thank you and thank you for your passion um on this. Um, so what I'll what I'll do before we go to testimony, I do, we do have, I do have a couple of broad questions that um every panelist doesn't have to answer, but if you would like to, um, just jump on in. Um, but uh and you you sort of touched on the first question I had um for the group. Um, was, you know, what are the the biggest barriers that you see? And I think you did a great job laying out many of those. Um, but I I I'll combine a couple of questions. What are the barriers to to starting that um we need to really take note of in all of your experiences and there's a number of different settings and experiences represented here? Um, and biggest barriers and I guess what are our ways that the city can do a better job at supporting uh efforts to uh to push for the creation of more community-based gardens?
If I could first, uh Marcus Williams, education is a big hurdle. A lot of people have misnomers still about farming. Uh, they associate it still with slavery, associated with hard labor work. So getting some of those uh misconceptions out of the way and getting some general knowledge of agriculture in general, where the seeds, where the seed is, uh telling them about different methods of farming, whether it's in the ground, in the ground raised beds. Also talking to them about uh the use and the not use of fertilization pesticides, non-pesticides, letting people make informed, make informed decisions for themselves, whether they want to use natural fertilizers, whether they want to use natural pesticides, synthetic, let them know that there's differences out there so they can make decisions.
Thank you.
Hi, um, again, I'm Doris Manaterell on the Broadway East Community. I still would like to push the point of easy access to the process and capital. It's important that we make the process available to people. The staff now does a great job, but without the information exchange and the education, as the gentleman prior to me said, we're still going to struggle. So education, access and capital is a key point.
I would like to say something about education. This is Topay. So I said that I teach agribusiness at the University of Maryland. My specific department is something I'd like to push to Baltimore City High Schools. I teach entrepreneurship at the Institute of Applied Agriculture. This is a two-year program that I'm hoping that a lot more students from the city can take advantage of. And yes, it is very practical and very quick. If students want to stop after two years, they can go ahead and stop. If they want to proceed to a four-year college, they have just two more years to complete. But this is a way for many of our city kids to understand what agriculture really means because part of the program is that in the middle of the program, you have to do an internship on a farm. So even for those who were coming with little or no agri uh agriculture knowledge, they're able to, you know, go and do their internship and come back and, you know, proceed in careers in agriculture. So I really second that motion of education and I want to really, you know, plug the um University of Maryland College Park, especially the IAA program.
Thank you.
So this is Katie Lauter. Um, I would also say streamlining the process, a lot of these processes that the city has created are multi-step, like they're, you know, you get your water this way and your dachla this way and um it's if you could develop a process that is a bit more streamlined and has easier access for communities, that would be helpful. Um, and water access is a real bottleneck with a lot of the work. The GPW uh does not have, is not staffed up to serve a little, an even larger uh community garden uh network than exists. Uh, I, as I understand it, there's only one staff person who turns on the water or who can turn on the water for community gardens. Uh, and uh that, if you're going to enlarge, will only increase the bottleneck. So, um, and and they do a really great job. It's just there's not enough, there's not enough money staffing those positions. Um, and yeah, so and service to community, having, having there be a uh lead area where community gardens and farms are going. There's, there's many different places to service those same. Uh, there's many different agencies that service various pieces of a community garden or farm process right now.
Thank you.
I strongly support what Katie is saying, that we need a kind of a one-stop shop, one location, everything is there and it makes the process easier for those who are interested in taking on the farming that's absolutely necessary now for survival. We see it with the COVID. The educational piece again has to be upfront. Our younger generation doesn't understand sometimes where food is actually coming from. So pushing the point to them, the necessity of farming to ease the financial burden of your household will be a major task. So in considering that it's a major task, I think we need to have people on board who understand how we can get that information out to the public in the school systems with a curriculum that says, we know we need to do this now for survival. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd I'd like to um address the panel on your question as well, uh Chair, and I'll start where you left off, Ms. Manaterell, with education. Um, we also work on green schools programming in the Office of Sustainability and there are a lot of schools where they're finding that um garden programs are a way that to engage kids uh when they're not engaged with the idea of healthy food or with subject matters like science, math and English even. You know, you can work um a gardening curriculum into those subjects in a way that um is much more engaging than sitting in a classroom all day and much safer during COVID. So we're working on an outdoor classrooms initiative as well to expand those opportunities at schools. Um, but to address your question about the needs and what we can do, uh, you know, land access has been mentioned a number of times and I'll sort of say for each of these, something we have done and more that we need to do. So um we pass a tax credit uh for urban farms um to make it more feasible uh to start up new farm businesses. There's not been very much uptake of that, um, and that's a whole other conversation. But um we need more capacity uh to um connect people to land. Uh, you know, we work closely with the housing department, but um you know, there was in the past a point person there whose job it was to think about greening issues and we don't have that capacity currently. Um, and so that can be a bottleneck, although we are actively having conversations, doing leases, transferring land to people, it can be very slow. Um, in regards to water access, um, we had had a program in the past, the Garden Irrigation Fund, where we use capital bond monies to help people install new water lines. Uh, we haven't had that available for the past couple of years. Um, so bringing something like that back would be a big deal and certainly what Katie Lauter said about uh adding capacity there as well, um, because it can get very choked up. Um, access to healthy soil, you know, you can have access to land, but not necessarily have the soil you need to grow on. Uh, our office has been helping um farms around the city and install three bin composting systems so they can do, be community compost drop-off centers for neighbors and grow healthy soil. Um, but that could be expanded greatly uh in cooperation with recreation and parks. Uh, we've got our camp small facility where we're processing wood waste and leaf mulch. You know, there's a lot of potential there. The Department of Public Works has had these um grow center programs every spring and fall uh where they're providing free mulch to people and information services, expanding that. Um, and then finally, uh, the the need for public education was mentioned and that is a a goal in our urban agriculture plan that we really haven't reached. Um, we need to invest in it and uh let people know that there are farms and gardens in their neighborhoods that they could be getting involved in um so that they can see it firsthand. It's not an abstract idea. Uh, and that also brings us back to that centralized source of information. You know, we put together all the resources and information we could find on our website, but um there's a lot more that could be done around that. Um, and finally, uh, I'll just say one of our goals is to see a farm incubator in the city. Uh, a place where it's sort of set up like a community garden, where you've got these, those individual plots, but they're bigger, like an eighth of an acre and a quarter of an acre. And people who want to really learn to grow food intensively um for their neighborhood as a business, what have you, can come together there, learn from each other, share resources and gain experience. Um, so those are some thoughts.
Uh, it appears that Abby is strongly saying to us again that we need a point person, a person of contact. We need leadership to make sure this goes forward. So I guess my question is, will this resolution make sure that it happens? Will this resolution also guarantee capital dedicated to the process?
So the answer to your question is no. Um, resolutions by the council, uh, I don't, I guess I can do a quick sort of overview. So the the resolutions are a way to have a conversation like we're doing today to get information out, um, to inform the agencies that are all on this call that do the work so that they can better tailor their programming. Uh, the council has some capacity or ability to um to direct agencies, but a lot of what we're talking about today are sort of administrative functions that don't really line up with the council's authority to enact, but we can use the position that we have uh to 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 have these conversations to there are representative from the uh the mayor's administration on the call, I mean, on this, on this webex today that are hearing and taking down this feedback. Uh, but yeah, the resolutions are non-binding, um, and we don't have a way to legislate capital or operations uh at this point. Um, there may be some changes moving forward uh through proposed charter amendments that would give us a little bit more authority over the allocation of funds, uh, one of which just passed a few weeks ago. Um, and is uh actually was just signed by the mayor and will be on the ballot in November, which would give the council the ability to to move money in the budget, but as of today, uh, the council does not have that authority. Um, but the intent was to, again, initiate this conversation, get feedback from uh folks from a variety of perspectives like yourselves that are doing this work every single day and can sort of give this much-needed and very helpful feedback on programming so that we can better advocate um for a single point of contact or more capital or uh breaking down some of the red tape that you all have laid out for us today. Um, so I I hope that answers it. I wish I could say yes to that, but we are constrained by the city charter, um, which doesn't at this point give us that authority to do it, but I wanted to push it forward anyway. Um, I didn't mention at the beginning of this hearing, but I should have, that I'm a avid community gardener. Uh, I don't have a large garden this year. Uh, it's been a lot uh for me to manage with the pandemic and everything else going on, but I did want to show you all my cucumber I just harvested before uh the hearing started uh out of my little garden uh in the backyard uh with the eye, with the hope that, um, you know, and it really sort of ties into my next question, but um, just making sure that, you know, people, that you don't have to have a huge farm, right? The idea is that you can grow a couple of things this year. I'm just doing cucumbers, uh lettuce, tomatoes. Um, and I have some fruits coming, hopefully watermelon, we'll see, uh planted that one a little bit late, but um, the idea was to sort of show, you know, show that this is something I'm into, that other members of the council are into, that you all are working really hard every day to push forward and just wanting to elevate the work. Um, so my my next question before I go to my colleagues, and again, just throw this out to um anyone who wants to answer, but uh what would you tell uh communities or residents who want to start their own gardens? Which of they be, uh, I guess one piece of advice, uh, the best advice that you've gotten uh starting out?
Councilman Burnett, this is Councilman Rice Singer speaking. Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, people in my district, I tell them to go to Cherry Hill Farm Community and also to go see Vidette Jones at Gilbert Street Garden. And they could help them, you know, uh with the objective they want to do, you know, community garden. And uh I just want to say that you're right, Councilman, Mr. Chair. We don't have the authority, but I think this is a great hearing because we, it's such a narrative that, you know what I mean, for them to be able to reach the objective. And I think listening, I know that Cherry Hill and even Curtis Bay, they're very involved in regards to schools, having the children come and, you know, grow crops and flowers. So I just think this is a a great hearing and I appreciate the people, you know, testifying, the participants, because it can help set the narrative to reach that. Thank you.
Agreed. That that's the goal, is we want to use the power that we do have to elevate this conversation.
Can I, can I chime in? Mary Pat Clark, member of committee. Uh, first of all, I just love hearing about all this because I am probably the only person in this entire meeting who lived with a World War II victory garden. Um, it's Rhode Island. Um, and so uh I was a very little girl, but I remember my family had a little victory garden beside the back of the house and we grew tomatoes. Oh, I might add also hollyhocks. I'm not sure the nutritional value of them, but they grew. And um everybody that, every family I knew um had a little garden, a victory garden. And yeah, we ate the tomatoes. We grew tomatoes in ours. We, we ate the tomatoes and gave them to neighbors and they gave us cucumbers. Um, and that's how it worked and I love seeing that spirit grow now with this COVID. Um, and I hope that it continues to grow. I, I have a uh, one thing I'd like to say though, I'm, two things. One, I I was around, I have no credit, but I was around when Baltimore Green Space started. And I know how hard it was and what it took. Um, it, it was, it all began because there was a slumlord who wouldn't take care of a piece of property. And finally, we got that property away from him and that began a uh garden, a community garden um in uh on Homestead Street in Waverly. And that garden grew into Baltimore Green Space because we were, because uh the the developer of that garden that who lived there um was so, and Katie is her successor, um, wanted to make sure that people had, could get hold of land and it wouldn't be taken away if they were farming on it and growing things in the community. And it just took a long time, but wow, it sure is successful. Um, I also have a bill that I'm trying to get passed right now that, that would basically um make illegal in Baltimore the use of certain pesticides that if we're gonna go to the trouble of, of growing food, we want to make sure it's the healthiest possible. And this group of farmers pioneers here for what's growing and growing can really set an example for the whole city. And I hope that you will try to grow without pesticides. And I, I have to name my three hated pesticides, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, okay? I've finally learned how to pronounce them after all these months. Glyphosate, um, which is um, which we would, we would um prohibit. Chlorpyrifos, and that's something that is especially dangerous for children. It, even children in the womb, um, and can stop their develop, their mental development during their lives. And um, neonicotino, um, with noid, neonicotinoid. So those are three I'm trying to get rid of. They got rid of uh chlorpyrifos at the General Assembly this year, but it got vetoed. So we've been working with those, those advocates to try to get override the veto. And I hope we will. But even if we override the veto, and that's the one that hurts kids so much, little, little kids, their whole, for their whole lives. Even if the veto gets overridden, it expires anyway in 2024. And so they're really rooting for us to get that passed in Baltimore. So they have an example that they can point to to extend their own veto and prohibition of that, that pesticide. So that was more than you ever wanted to hear. I don't have a yard these days, so I'm not growing anything except um admiring those who do and trying to support however I can. And thank you so much for sharing your, sharing your experiences. And let me put in a special um word for uh the University of Maryland and its extension service because they've been ragging the city council for years about all the things they do, the most important of which is gardening and farming. And thank you for being there before we got started here and being part of the growth because they know it, they, they, they are the veterans and they are the champions. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm not going anyplace. I just stop, stop talking.
I got it. Thank you, Councilmember Clark. And I'm actually trying to find, because I thought we had announced a date for the pesticides bill. I'm gonna see where it is. All right. While I'm looking for that, um, I thought, I thought we had, maybe I'm misremembering.
We may have, uh, we may.
No, we didn't.
I know. We had a hearing, it went fine. I have a hearing coming up next week, not a hearing, a meeting with some agencies that have problems, okay? Trying to, trying to get the problem solved uh about money, about a personnel that they need so that we can come back to you for a work session. That's it, for a work session in which we might not have total support from the agencies, but enough that the committee feels okay about moving forward. I mean, it's a COVID year coming up, or the end of COVID, we hope. But it will be a hard fiscal year and maybe we need to push back the active date of the legislation to get into a more, you know, where we are more stable with our funding and personnel. But I'm trying to work out the details so that when we come back to you, uh, we'll have at least, we'll have as best we can get in terms of agency support. See how we work here, everybody? He's the head of the Health Committee.
I would add that if any of you are supportive of this, please email your support to Councilmember Clark, because it is, she's correct. We had the hearing on May 7th. Uh, I forgot, we hadn't re-announced the work session.
I know, right? Well, because I haven't asked you to, because I, I'm going through a couple of meetings with agencies to try to get more accurate numbers for what it will cost and try to work it out with them. Some, I mean, Rakin Parks is opposed to giving up, um, uh, let's see, they don't want to give up glyphosate. Well, I'm not giving up, giving it up. So we're not gonna have a perfect agreement, but um, I think that we'll, we'll come to some agreements and, and um, but, but I can't stop fighting glyphosate. It's roundup. That's roundup. And it's just, you know, it's not good for people at all. So that's not what we're talking about, but thank you very much for your interest in farming. And I know that you will be models for those who say that nothing can be grown if we don't have herbicides, pesticides, killing things that get into the food. No. Let's do it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. So I guess the, it, the, to throw out the, the question, or the last question, um, I guess advice for, for startups. Um, the best advice you've gotten so far, if anyone else wanted, wants to chime in there. Then we'll talk about where we're going from here.
Uh, so I, oh, was somebody else gonna go?
Yes.
Okay, I was just gonna say really quick, um, to chime in on your question about startups. Anybody who started any agricultural, like you said, whether it's a backyard garden, a farm or anything of that nature, um, patience. I would say patience. I know it's small, I know it's simple, but patience is by far the best weapon you can have in your back pocket when it comes to this work. I've only been a part of it for two years, um, but however, patience is like, is, is truly a virtue and I think it's one of the places you'll learn that, you'll learn that is, is in the soil. You have to, there are gonna be setbacks, there are gonna be missteps. And um, I've, I've also learned that like you cannot cut corners or you won't yield what you want to yield. So it's a lot, but it's really all in, I think, uh, I think it boils down to being patient, understanding patient, practicing patient, and knowing exactly what it means to be patient too.
I would like to say something, this is topic. And mine is to first of all establish what your motive is. And if your motive is um for profit, you have to have a clear plan. Of the farmers in Maryland, over 50% of Maryland farmers earn less than $10,000 a year. That cannot take you home. So people get frustrated. But I realized, having been farming a couple of seasons and being able to double and triple our income every year, I realized that the key to successful farming, to profitable farming in Maryland or anywhere else is to have a plan. You have to know your numbers, you have to be, you have to understand what crop is profitable and what isn't. You have to take time to know that and be ready to correct the mistakes the next season. If you're growing a bunch of cucumbers and Baltimore City does not like cucumbers, then switch to something that they like. So the, the first thing I would say is understand why you're doing this. If you're just doing this to exchange food with your neighbors, that's fine. But if you want to make any profit from this, then you have to have a plan.
Thank you.
Uh, in response to your question, Councilman, um, I've often said to people when they've said, you know, I think I want to try to start a new community garden or, or want to try to start a, a farm. It's probably going to take longer and, you know, be more complex or more costly than you might think, but you should absolutely do it because you will succeed if you keep at it. And what I'm most hopeful for, uh, you know, it's another way of saying the patience that Brother Lee mentioned, but is that um, you know, we can uh cut back on the fact, on the timeline, cut back on the cost, that we can help make this easier for people and not such a struggle.
Thank you.
This is Katie. I guess what I would say is don't let them tell you that planting is not powerful. I've seen, it's just, you know, when you're starting up, it can get hard. So just remember that planting is powerful and you will see the impact long term if you go.
Awesome. So.
I would just add flexibility to what we're saying because sometimes it's not gonna go your way, but you need to be flexible and acceptable of changing that in your best interests.
Thank you. And so I'll, I'll share mine. Uh, so I started uh gardening accidentally uh about six years ago or so. I reached out to um Blue Water Baltimore. At the time, they were doing these like water audits uh for your house. And I was having flooding in my basement. And they came out and I was like, oh, this seems like a cool service. Uh, and maybe this could be a non-traditional way to deal with some of the water flow issues in my backyard. Uh, and the staffer came out and they're supposed to teach me how to start a water garden. And that became a lesson on lasagna gardening, uh, and sort of learning how to layer and growing food and like where to put it. So it sort of acted both and I did really bad the first year and I'm pretty sure I killed like everything growing. I did try to do it organic, no pesticides or additives, that kind of thing. Um, but it became sort of an addiction and then every year, uh, kept doing it. And you know, even this year I have, uh, I haven't been able to grow as much as I would normally do in normal years, but um, I wouldn't, was not gonna let it pass. And so my advice for folks is to just start somewhere, uh, start small. There's a tremendous amount of information on the internet. Uh, but also obviously the folks in, on this hearing also shows you that there's a tremendous amount of expertise across the city of Baltimore and across the region that you can tap into and learn from. And everyone is very willing to help. Uh, and that's been my experience in working with this community. Um, I also used to co-manage a farmer's market um at Edmonton High School uh, and sort of really learn the business side of urban agriculture. Uh, and so I'd say all that to say, um, you know, I think this is a very important thing when we talk about, especially in the middle of a pandemic where there are legitimate concerns about food access impacts our food, food distribution system. We saw early on that, you know, getting to grocery stores and runs of grocery stores were a real challenge, especially for our seniors. Uh, and so, you know, this is something that um, that was important to lift up. Uh, also want to shout out one of my staff members, Thora Low, who's been pushing this. He's a very avid uh gardener as well, has a greenhouse, all, all the cool things in, in her backyard. Uh, and so I just wanted to say thank you for, for lifting this up. For next steps, uh, and thank you all for making time this evening uh to share your expertise, share the challenges. Um, and we will definitely um be working following this hearing um to try and address some of the things that have been mentioned. And we'll be working with the Office of Sustainability. I'll be reaching out Lisa uh to, to follow up on this one. But hearing, well, actually, public testimony. I was about to close it out, but I forgot. Marguerite, do you want to help me walk through public testimony? If there's anyone that hasn't, that wasn't from our panels, that's logged on.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go down the list now. Good afternoon, caller. Do you have anything you would like to say to the committee? Courtney Hobson, do you have anything you would like to share with the committee?
Um, yes, I do, actually. Um, I'm a part of a community garden in West Baltimore and um currently we're uh facing the issue of potential displacement. Um, and so I just wanted to know, um, with this resolution and discussions going forward, how the city plans to preserve those community garden spaces that are currently um in existence already.
So um, I'm sorry, was it Courtney?
Yes.
Uh, do you know who owns the land that the garden is on now?
Um, the, the, the city housing department. We've been trying to get a meeting with someone in housing for a few months now to discuss uh the future of um the property. Um, and we haven't been able to get that uh settled as of yet. Um, the city housing thought that they were speaking with the stewards of the garden. In reality, they weren't. Um, so months went by with the assumption that we were okay with being displaced and they had, they weren't in communication with us in reality. So we're finally speaking with them, but we still have yet to get a meeting on the books. And we're trying to work with uh Baltimore Green Space to see if the city is willing to uh sell the property.
And what is the name of your site?
Uh, Pop Farm, P O P.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're in uh.
Okay, I'll check in with you, obviously, you know. In terms of what we're doing to try to preserve sites, we are working with Baltimore Green Space. Uh, we received an application um recently for a community farm on the west side uh that we're looking at and seems to be moving forward and they're inviting an application from White Lock Community Farm. So I can't speak to like this particular case, but that is a pathway that people are using. You know, when they find that direct purchasing is out of reach is to, to go under this land trust.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just say, because I have to leave, but I couldn't tear away from this problem. That's what, how Baltimore Green, um, Green Space got started. I mean, it's a guerrilla operation. They've, that's the fight they fight, getting the land. Yep, all right, I gotta go. I just had to say that. Thanks.
Yeah, no, we understand that the issue has been we haven't been able to get in contact or we haven't had a commitment or comment from the city.
Yeah, I'm talking about Baltimore Green Space and always sustainability. That is, that's an army in itself. Um, if you can't meet with the right people, just, just meet with the ones that know how to fight that exact issue and the right people will show up at the meeting.
Councilmember, Councilmember Clark, if you could give us maybe a couple more minutes? I don't know if you gotta like run this exact second, but I did plan to vote the resolution out.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, I have, uh, yeah, I've gotta go.
Okay. There are callers. Marguerite?
Mr. Chair, it looks like you have two more callers. Okay?
Let's, let's work through it. I think we still have a forum, even though the Council. I think we still have.
Yes, you have one without me?
Riceinger and Slifer are still on the, still on the line.
That's correct.
I've got to leave. I've got to be, okay, thank you. Call me on the phone if you, if somehow you need me and I'll come up and get back on or something, okay? I got it. Yeah.
All right.
Kimberly Cox, do you have anything you would like to say to the committee?
Just that everyone did a great job in presenting.
Well, okay.
Thank you. I agree.
And last, and last but not least, Tom Curtin. Do you have anything you would like to say to the committee?
Anything but, um, very glad to see this effort out there. I've been, I've been Kate, my wife and I, we've been growing stuff for about 50 years, mostly in Baltimore City, and it's just wonderful. We get the farm right, real close to Harold, and it's a great way to meet people in the city. And it's a great way, as you're all talking about, to bring in wholesome food uh to share with the people you know. And I'll be talking to Harold about some of those efforts to get food out to other people. That's great to hear. So thank you all very much.
Uh, and I apologize for interjecting, but I, I just wanted to say, um, Courtney, if you could give me your contact information. Um, I can be reached at uh, A B B Y period, C O C K E at baltimorecity.gov.
Okay. Um, I can, you want me to say it now over the line or do you want me to email you?
If you wouldn't mind emailing me.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
That concludes public testimony, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Chair, yes.
Sorry, uh, this, this is uh, Matt Segman from uh, the mayor's office. Uh, just wanted to mention, so obviously there were not any representatives from the housing department invited to this hearing. Uh, but I just wanted to say I, I am gonna reach out to them this evening and uh, uh, see what's uh, going on with uh, that fund. So, thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna, I, I was actually trying to see who was still on the line in the mayor's office so we could get that resolved. Thank you. I didn't see you on there. Appreciate it, man.
Great, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Um, again, thank you all for making time for us this, this evening, um, and for all that you do. Um, so I do see, it looks like two of my colleagues there. Yeah, and Rice Singer's still on here and Slifer's still on. Okay. Um, is there a motion to vote on Council Resolution 20 dash 02-1?
Rice Singer moves. You get that? Rice Singer moves.
Uh, moved by Rice Singer. Is there a second? Uh, hold on. Let's see, Councilman Slifer on here. Let me get him a message. All right, we'll recess for one second, y'all. Okay, we are back. Councilmember Slifer was having some technical issues, but I think he's available for the second.
Yeah, I'm here.
All right. Um, is there a second?
Sure.
Yes, okay. All right. So motion made by Councilmember Slifer, seconded by, I mean, motion made by Councilmember Rice Singer, seconded by Councilman Slifer. I vote yes. Uh, Councilmember Rice Singer?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and Councilmembers Henry, Clark are absent. Um, the motion passed. The committee will recommend a favorable report for the resolution. The resolution will be placed on second reader at the next council meeting. Where the full council will review and take a vote at that time. Uh, if there is no other business, the committee is now adjourned. Again, thank you all for making time for us this evening. Uh, and we will get this done. Bending, gardening in Baltimore City. Have a good night.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you.
Thank you.